Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Do we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to you by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have my Special Olympic participants line up?
Come on up here, guys.
Thank you.
Lot of noise from all those mountains.
Right. About three weeks ago, I think, I had the opportunity to do a send-off for these athletes that went to the Special Olympics in Orlando, Florida, and they had a great showing for the city of Sioux City, and we just wanted to bring them here today and tell them how proud of them we are and what it means for us to be able to recognize them for the great week they had down in Orlando. John Kleagle and Sean Demeris, are you... Come on up here, guys. These guys are with the State of Iowa Special Olympics. We appreciate you coming to town. Say a few words if you'd like to before and...
Well, I'd like to thank all of Sioux City. We have over 140 athletes here with the Sioux City Knights, and not only do you guys support them like you are today, you provide volunteers for us, you provide funding, you do absolutely everything that we ask of you. If we could duplicate a city across the state, it would be Sioux City. You guys do a terrific job. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy and Keith, come on up and stand with your athletes. Troy and Keith are two of the coaches. Kevin Kemp lives in Cedar Falls, but actually helps coach the team, so we appreciate all that you guys did. I'm going to take a minute and read the names of the athletes. They're in this order, going this way. Christina Rasmussen got three medals in swimming. Desiree Peterson got three medals in swimming. Preston Stevens got three medals in swimming. Billy Haberman got two medals in tennis. Gary Davis got two medals in boachy. I can't ever say that, but... And then Abigail Zirk got three medals in athletics. Tasha Conklin got three medals in bowling. Jesse Peace got a medal in golf. Amanda Bry got four medals in powerlifting. Jesse Koppel got three medals in powerlifting. Josh Davis got four medals, Josh is not here today, in powerlifting. And Mitchell Betsworth, four medals, all gold, I believe, right? All gold in powerlifting, and that's not Mitchell's first time, so give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to interview with the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, Michelle Pick. Michelle, are you here?
Yeah.
Come on up to the microphone. Turn it around there. I forgot to do that, if you would. Tell us a little bit about... I know it's a hard act to follow, but tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the committee.
Okay. I am a teacher at the Sioux City Community School District, and I work extensively with the East High Student Council. We're always looking for projects to get involved with, and my husband and I bike quite a bit. We not only cycle around Sioux City and on the trails here, but we like to cycle when we go to other cities as well. So I just see a lot of... I see a lot of things in other places that I think we could implement here to get more people active, and I think we could improve safety and opportunities for cycling here.
And where'd you say you teach at?
At the Career Academy to the district.
Okay. Questions?
What are some of the things that you would change about our current trail system?
Of course, we need to finish. It's kind of a long way, but we need to have more trails. We need to advertise that they're there more, too. Bike lanes, there are very few bike lanes. Cycling here can be kind of dangerous, and we don't want people cycling on the sidewalks, but sometimes that's the only option for safety. I would love to see more events. As far... There's the Bike SUX, and there's the Bite and Bike, I think it's called, coming up, something like that. I think we could do more, though.
Well, I appreciated your application, your ideas, and your just forward-thinking about what we can do in the future, so we need those types of people on our boards and commissions, and really appreciate that.
Thanks.
I also want to congratulate you on your advising the East High Student Council because they were recognized by the... Was it by the State of Iowa just this past year, wasn't it?
The Character Award.
Yeah, the Character Award. That was a big deal, so thank you for all the time and effort you put in for that job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great work. Thank you.
We'll go to the consent items, three through 14E. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a council member asks for a vote. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the City Council minutes from June 10th, 13th, 14th, and 2022. I need to abstain on all of those. I don't think I was here for any of them, right? No, I wasn't. Four is a resolution recommending Sky West Airlines to the United States Department of Transportation to provide service to the airport. Five is a resolution fixing fees for services provided by the Police Department, rescinding Resolution Number 2010-0390 and 2010-0804. Six is a motion authorizing staff to negotiate with Granicus to provide web-based portal to receive, track, and fulfill public records and request.
I had some questions about that one. Chief for... Okay, Chris.
Captain Chris Gross, Sioux City Police Department.
Hey, Chris, I was just wondering if you could talk just a little bit about this company and familiarity with this or other departments that are using it. I'm sure they were highly recommended or specialized in this type of thing. I didn't know if it was a competitive process or if we sought them out for a reason. Just wondering if you could shed some light on that.
Granicus is like a parent company that owns a lot of sub-companies. We actually use Granicus for our city website. The actual company that I was interested in is GovQA, and just a little backtrack on that. We use a video redaction software called...
Veritone.
What is it?
Is it Veritone?
Veritone, there you go. So Veritone is the redaction software that we use, and we've renewed that contract. Veritone partners with GovQA. They have a link together, so if we were to go with GovQA, there's a partnership part of that. They talk to each other. So to say that it's a competitive... There may be other billing systems out there, but we wanted to use a partner that we're already using, and we use Granicus with the city for the website.
Okay.
So that's why they were selected and chosen.
It should streamline the process.
You've got to go to the microphone. I've had the privilege of laying in bed last week, and I couldn't hear a darn thing because... So speak... Name and address and...
Connie Yancey, City Legal. It should streamline the process because the software will transfer easily. They've worked out all of the bugs between the two companies. That should cut down on the time and improve the user friendliness of the software and the programming. Right now, with the number of video requests coming in, it is chewing up a tremendous amount of staff time that by all aspects, and looking at the programs and looking at the trial run that they showed us, should significantly reduce that and also allow for more individuals. Right now, we primarily have one individual who is extremely adept at doing the video redactions. If that person is gone for any reason, whether personal or whatever, then we grind to a stop, but we still are required to comply with timelines for open records requests.
Okay. No, I thought in the RCA you made a compelling argument of why the software and this program would be necessary, and I understand, but if the mayor has taught me anything, it's the importance of sometimes we get married to a program, and then that program is tough to get away from, and their prices increase, and so I just want to make sure that we continue to look at that. It sounds like this is the better program, especially for what we have right now, but just as long as we're being cognizant of that in the future.
We look at our redaction software, and we looked at different... Going away from Veritone and other software as well, but Veritone seemed to be the best solution for our video redaction, and because they have that partnership built in, they do communicate and talk to each other between the two, so...
Do you anticipate that the demand, the increase in demand for public records will continue?
Oh, I think it's going to increase, especially with this change. Anytime that somebody comes in and gets a copy of the report, we were charged... That's part of that RCA. We were charging that fee to try to offset some of the staff costs with that change in legislation, with that reducing it to be 30 minutes free. We're fearful of what that does. I mean, if people can really come in and get a copy of any report, that doesn't take... You know, it takes less than 30 minutes. We can't charge for that, so... Video redaction is always growing, and people want the body-worn camera stuff. And I put it in the RCA, at some point, those things that take too long, we're going to have to build in a 50% deposit for those videos, because a lot of times we get these requests, and we'll have staff spend two, three hours on it, and then all of a sudden they say, "Well, we don't want any more." Well, we just spent that time, so we've got to have them have a vested interest in it if we're going to do those video redactions, that they have something vested in it, so we're covering our costs.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seven is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area for July 1st for the Mardi Gras parade. Eight is a resolution authorizing payment to Dixon Construction for the Riverfront Trail Connection Project. Nine are actions relating to grants and donations. A is a resolution approving an Iowa commercial aviation and infrastructure funding grant to assist the site work and development of tea hangers at the airport. Mike, we're going to make sure where we spot these doesn't conflict with anything the 185th is doing, right?
Yes, Mike Colet, Assistant City Manager. So the new tea hangers, we have planned to go up to the north, so on the other side over the base of that.
Okay, thank you. B is a resolution authorizing fire rescue to apply for a local fire protection and emergency medical services grant for the purchase of smoke alarms. C is a resolution authorizing an application for the Gilchrist Foundation project grant for public art on West 7th Street. D is a resolution accepting a donation from Downtown Partners for additional lighting and seating at Pearl Street Park. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with JEO Consulting for the well replacement program project. How much of South Bridge are we using right now?
Red Pitts Utilities Director. We're at half capacity right now. We're pumping about $5 million out of there each day.
So we have a whole lot of capacity we're not using, but yet we're going to look for a new well field.
Right. I would... The way I would explain that is it's really two separate issues. We discussed the need for the pipeline at South Bridge. We're including that in the upcoming CIP process, but for the Zenith plant, with the aging wells that we have now and the continued plugging of the gravel pack, we will... We need to look at starting to replace those wells or add additional wells for the Zenith plant, and that's what this is.
I know what it is, but I'm wondering why, because you could... Why can't you make that well, that water plant be your primary water plant, and Zenith become secondary?
Yeah, the South Bridge plant doesn't have the capacity to essentially be the main plant. It won't... It would be unable to feed...
But for a few thousand dollars... For a few million dollars, I know... Unless you guys weren't telling the truth when you built it, which I believe you were, you can double the capacity of that plant relatively quickly, and it's all automated, doesn't take a lot of people.
But it wouldn't feed the far reaches of the distribution system to the north, and that's why we need to keep the Zenith plant with the capability to do so.
I get that, but you can feed a lot of the area with that. I just... I mean, we're going to continue to put money in this old plant and still use that plant down there at 50% capacity. It makes no sense to a businessperson that you've got capacity and you're not using it, so is a pipeline a better place to spend money than a new well field?
Don't think so, but we can look into it.
Well, I'd like to have these crackerjack engineers from JEO tell me why that isn't the case, because I don't know why we built that plant the size we did if we never had plans to use it. We were always going to tie more pipeline in so we could use that. I mean, what are you going to do if you have a dry summer, which it appears we're going to?
Yeah, and that's why we need the capacity at the Zenith plant to make sure that we're able to meet demand.
I know, but when are we going to realize that we can tie them together? There has to be a way to tie the two plants together, isn't there? Am I missing it? What am I missing?
They pump into the same distribution or the same pressure zone. They both pump into the Grand View Pressure Zone.
Right.
So at some point, there's meeting pressures that don't allow the South Bridge plant to pump any further north than what it currently does.
But you can solve that with putting a pump in the middle. You can boost... You put booster pumps. You just put $2.5 million in a booster pump up at 38th and Virginia. That's how you increase it, isn't it?
Yeah, and we did the same, and we have the same. We have half-moon booster and 520 booster to pump out to Morningside.
Right.
So we have that same capability there.
I don't know. I don't know why we built that one down there, but if we just built it to serve the industrial area, that was a bad investment to build it to the size of what we built it, if that's the case. And that's all we're basically serving right now, is the industrial area.
It's serving the majority of Morningside also.
Hey, you're not shipping anything out of Zenith down there?
Well, it...
I know.
It does both.
No sense what we do here, but... Is that something, Mayor, we should ask the engineers to... Well, I'd like them to tell us what it would take to... Otherwise, that plant's a $10 million or $10 million gallon plant, and can be $20 million relatively quickly, but yet we'd only use $5 million of it. What are you... You're going to use $5 million when you have a drought? Why? I mean, there's got to be a way to use that capacity if we get into really dry weather, but... Can you find out what the additional charges would be if we did have a look at that to just tie it in?
Yeah, I can certainly ask what they would include to take a look at that.
Are you just going to look for new Dakota Sandstone wells, or are you looking for another collector?
Probably just vertical wells with this study, two new vertical wells, not horizontal collector wells. The cost to do a horizontal collector well would probably be double, if not three times the amount for the same work.
No, I understand that, and I mean, I don't know. What... Have you pulled the screens and acid-treated them and all that?
Yeah, we've rehabbed... We've actually rehabbed three wells this last winter. We're rehabbing another one in the process.
And that's not increasing their capacity very much?
Not very much. I mean, since the '70s and '80s, over time, the gravel pack plugs to a point where they're not necessarily repairable to the full extent.
You don't have to spend $80,000 to know you just drill a well on the riverfront, then you...
Well, I'm not...
I mean, you used to have them up in Cook Park.
Yeah.
For years, you had them in Cook Park, so you don't... There's water all over there, so... Okay. B is a resolution approving renewal option two. I'm sorry. Could I go back to 9B real quick with the chief, Chief Everett, on the smoke alarms? I just want to point out to everyone how significant these lifesaving measures that you've taken, chief. In the last 10 years, your department's conducted over 2,000 home inspections, and you've installed over 3,300 smoke alarms in a 10-year period with that program, and that's just incredibly good. So I want to thank you for that, and they are lifesaving measures, and it's an important program, so I want everyone to know that you have that available for use by our citizens.
Thanks for taking a second to recognize that, Tom Everett, Fire Chief, and that's on our crews. While they're out there doing safe home inspections that are free, they can come into homes and do check out the house, give tips on how to make it safer, and installing smoke alarms. And recently, we started doing it on every... Trying to do it on every emergency call when it's appropriate, so it's really increased our numbers, and it makes a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Yep. B is a resolution approving renewal option number two to the contract with LP Building Services for janitorial and maintenance services in the Skywalk. C is a resolution approving change order number one to the contract with Subserco for the Floyd Park Golf Course Drainage Improvement Project. I need to abstain on that. D is a resolution approving development and minimum assessment agreements with MG88 and Coldlink Logistics for land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, the property at 7601 Alicia Avenue. E is a resolution approving a three-year Microsoft enterprise agreement. F is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Insight Public Sector for Microsoft licenses and maintenance renewal. Eleven are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution approving a contract and salary schedule for Ask Me Pats Union and EMS for a period beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2026. B is a resolution approving an employee benefits and other compensation guide for Ask Me Pats Union and EMS for a period July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2026. C is a resolution approving an amendment number two to the Health Reimbursement Arrangement Plan with Gallagher Benefit Services. D is a resolution accepting the proposed quote for Chapter 411 medical-only coverage. E is a resolution approving an administrative agreement with Iowa Municipalities Workers' Competition Association to administer Chapter 411 medical-only claims for firefighters. F is a resolution approving 411 agreement for non-risk partners for healthcare-related services to eligible employees and retired employees. G is a resolution approving a 411 agreement with North Risk Partners for pharmacy benefit management services provided by XLRX Solutions to eligible employees and retired employees. Twelve are applications for cigarette, tobacco, and nicotine vapor permits. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license, and fourteen are boards, commissions, and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes 5015 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the annual storm inlet repair project. I'll move that. Second. Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5016 is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of neighborhood services for lease of land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD urban renewal property at 521 Nebraska Street. I'll move that. Second. Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5017 is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Aftershock Ventures for the purchase of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and directing the city manager to negotiate a development agreement. I'll move that. Second. Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5018 is a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property, authorizing a corrective city deed and rescinding all conflicting resolutions of property at 3455 Maplewood Street. The petitioners, Austin and Shannon Speckman. I'll move that. Second. What, do we have a bad legal description here? Is that the deal? Block number was left out, omitted.
What was that, Dan?
Block number. Lots were listed, but the block was... So some high-binding real estate attorney caught that? Absolutely. Okay. Hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Thank goodness we have those attorneys. Could you repeat that? I'm pushing. That was tongue-in-cheek. 50. 19 is a hearing and resolution approving an easement and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an easement in this access agreement property at 1501 Morningside Avenue and 3600 Vine Avenue. The petitioner's Morningside College. I'll move it. Second. The hearing's now open. You guys got to explain to me what's going on. You have no permits to be out there. You've got our streets blocked off. You're digging in the right-of-way even today after you had a stop order. You've put footings in our right-of-way without any plan review. You had plan review, but you have not had an inspection on those footings, so who's going to explain to me how we got this far into a project? Because it's totally unacceptable. There is nobody else that would get away with that but Morningside College. City manager and the city attorney didn't believe that you were still working there, and I drive by, and you got a small mini excavator there digging today yet, even after you have a stop order?
David Brock is with CMBA Architects, project architect on the project. It was my understanding they did stop work last week, and I was unaware that they were actually working today. I was informed that there was a stop work order. It's one thing that the contractor, to try and meet their aggressive construction schedule, took the risk on their own to begin the construction there.
But you don't get to risk the welfare of taxpayers with no insurance, with no easement, blocking streets, diverting traffic into one lane with no... You don't get to do that.
I didn't also know that they were blocking the street. Unfortunately, the contractor's not here today.
I got pictures. They're five feet away from the curb both sides. I stood to get pictures or drove to get pictures, and I blocked traffic coming up the street to be able to get that. I mean, somebody's... Those barricades, if you remember, they were digging those footings during the Morningside Day Parade, and you didn't have even the right to do that then.
Correct.
So now we should just...
Did you say the contractor is just not here? He was going to be coming?
There is no representative for the contractor here today.
But they put footings in and didn't call the city, so how do we know the footings... I mean, this is a pretty critical deal to put a sign over a public street and not have a footing inspection.
Yes, we've been working with the rest of the city staff to try and get all the other this paperwork that we do have in place. Inspections-wise, that's outside of what my contract covers. I'm not certain how they do that typically, but I know oftentimes they'd snap photos of what that is and kind of after the fact, get a certain review of it. That's just hearsay from my position, but...
I don't know. That... I guarantee if this were a private citizen, they'd be digging those footings up. We'd make them do that, wouldn't you, Gordon? But I know we're not going to make Morningside College dig them up, so I'm going to vote no, because especially when you got a stop order and the guy's still laying block over on the other side, and that footing for that post is outside the public right-of-way. I believe you're right. But that footing ties into this steel beam. They're all going to be tied together as one big sign when you get done. Now, I'm not an engineer and architect like you are, but that sign's all one piece when you get done.
It will be correct.
I don't know. It's unbelievable to me that we could allow this to get this far, and the liability that the city has right now. And you guys, Klinger, Morningside College, you all know to close a public street of any consequence, you have to get a permit from these guys, and you just went ahead and did it without that.
They did, correct.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's very good coordination on the part of anybody today. But I can tell you, Stephen and Nicole are a little concerned about liability issues when they see pictures of you working there without any permission whatsoever. And the, the barricades are, are weak at best to divert traffic. I mean, they're just...
I have not seen any photos of what the barricades look like, so I'm not going to speak to that, but I do know that...
Well, give me your cellphone, and I'll be glad to ship them to you.
Okay. I do know that they have the rest of the site fenced off with site fencing, so.
Hmm.
Or it's just the portions not in the street?
Well, go out there tonight on your way home. Because they were digging in for drain tile today. There was a ditch. It was probably five foot by five foot by five foot. Now, they may have parked their excavator over the top of it tonight, or on the side, but, but there's nothing more than cones, and it's right on the curb.
You're, you're talking in the street?
I'm talking right on the curb of the street, yes.
Okay.
On the south side. So I don't know how they're going to block that off in...
Gordon, I don't want you to come up here on crutches. I'd feel bad if, well, maybe I need to anyway. Just going to ask if you were able and willing, or have been working with the contractor, able to follow up on them and see what next will be done, or what is able to be done to make sure that this doesn't happen, and that we get it spread away?
I called the contractor, and he didn't even understand, Matt Thompson, didn't even understand they had people digging in the ditch today, because he knew there was a stop order. Matt knew there was a stop order.
Gordon Ferris, city engineer. We have been notifying them to fill out a right-of-way permit, but we haven't gotten any action with them. We've told them to stop until after today if it gets approved, and we haven't had any results.
Sounds good.
How will we complete an inspection of the footings? Are they covered up?
Absolutely. They got field on them.
I haven't gone out there to see that yet, but...
I guarantee they got steel hanging, there's steel hang, the actual steel for the sign is already erected. And it's tied to the other one that goes over the sidewalk. It just looks like Morningside College and Klinger decided they were going to do this project as fast as they could, come hell or high water to me, because I don't know how you got steel that fast. I mean, you, you, there's steel shortage, but yet they were able to get steel, which means it had to be ordered quite a while ago.
Correct. We ordered the steel, and we've been working on the paperwork to get the easement figured out in the meantime. Unfortunately, for me, it was erected prior to the paperwork being completed with the city with easement.
Nicole, is there anything we can do that would make it retroactive as far as the exposure to the city?
Well, we need to have insurance in place. The easement agreement needs to be approved, and engineering's requirements need to be satisfied. Those are the immediate steps.
Haven't been received. Is that what you said?
They've been non-responsive.
Is that what you said?
Yes. Well, we told them to stop, and they haven't, so...
With a stop work order in place, there should be no work that's continuing.
Who's the contractor doing the footing?
Klinger.
I believe it is WA Klinger doing the footing work.
I think it is. I don't know. They're the general.
I don't, I don't think they've subbed anybody out on it, if that's what Gordon's asking.
Right. I don't think they're...
I think they're self-performing that.
So if we approve this tonight, we would still need those items, wouldn't we? So it wouldn't take effect until Gordon receives those items?
That's correct.
Till legal receives the insurance. That's my concern, is if they keep, would have kept working and hung steel over that roadway, without proper closing of the street, we got a huge liability.
We do have insurance from Morningside University. We have received that.
Got to hold harmless?
Yes, that's, Stephen Pastolka said illegal. That's part of the contract, yeah. Although, I mean, obviously, the contract hasn't finalized yet, so I don't know what the effect of that particular provision is, but we have an insurance agreement.
Doesn't the contractor have to provide that if they're working in public right-of-way? Every other contractor has to if they're working in a public right-of-way. Why would Klinger be exempt? Don't they?
Yes.
Yeah, you, I mean, you do it, right?
Yep.
If one of your, their contractors is working in the... Okay.
Thanks, Gordon.
Nicole, just one more question. So if we approve this, it's not going to elevate our risk. It's just going to allow them to continue with the process that they need to get their permits, et cetera?
Correct. They need to satisfy engineering.
Okay.
On the, to lift the stop work order.
Yeah.
Close.
Hearing closed. Fails. Well, we ran, no, we ran into this before. Doesn't, I didn't think it failed. Doesn't get deferred a week?
The entire council is present.
I'm sorry.
Someone's absent.
No, but we were all present on the lawnmower case. It was two to two to one, and I thought that deferred it for a...
No, in that case, it failed, but then there was a motion to reconsider that brought it back at a...
Right. No, but it came back for some reason, because then it was another two to two to one vote.
I think it was two weeks in a row that it failed.
Believe so.
I don't know. You're right. There was something that brought it back.
It was two weeks.
Why did it come back? Yeah, but why did it, yeah, why did it come back the second time? I thought it was because when the council has a, the first vote, Bob, is when it's two to two to one, I thought...
And there was some question procedurally.
Yes.
It should have failed at that point. The first...
Well, it should have.
Yes.
Which is, that's Robert's rules anyway. So our procedure, our...
I said that, and you said it didn't, though.
I can't remember, but you may have been right here.
Well, I don't hear that very often, so I'm just glad that...
So a couple different options that the council wishes to consider. It either fails with the work partially done. A motion to reconsider could be heard today by someone on the prevailing side, the failing side. It could be resurrected and deferred if there's additional information that needs to be presented to the council to satisfy for a vote on the agreement. Because it is scheduled for hearing, that makes it a little more difficult.
So either Matthew or the mayor could reconsider and then defer until information was gathered, and then it could be voted on? Is that what you said?
Well, I just, I'm really bothered that you guys just rammed ahead. That, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I know what would happen if a business did what you guys did. And I questioned it the night that we rode in that parade. Afterwards, I'm thinking, well, how are they digging there already? But I'll, I'll move to reconsider, but I hope this sends a strong message to Morningside that you, you're not going to be allowed to do this kind of stuff. Just, it should never happen. It, it just shouldn't happen.
I'll second it.
I'll move the motion. Oh, we got a...
Yes. Okane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Abstain conflict of interest.
Moore?
Aye.
I'll move it again. Nineteen.
Second.
Hearing's open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Stain conflict of interest.
Moore?
Aye.
Kane, Okane?
Aye.
Ordinance is twenty, it's an ordinance amending Chapter 705 Caravan, Animals, Prevent, Keeping of Animals and Vehicles During Hot Weather Under Certain Conditions. I'll move that.
Second. I do have a question on that. Who should I be asking?
Mayor and council. This was Caleb Christopherson's RCA. He's unfortunately not able to be with us tonight. Is there a representative from Animal Control present?
You just want to do first and bring it back next week.
Well, no, it's just, it's, it's just a basic question that I have about the, the temperature in the car, in the vehicle.
Oh, I did get that.
Were they, pardon?
I did get the temperature in the car.
No, but, yeah, they reduced it from ninety to seventy-nine, I think. But my question is, if you leave the windows partway open, does that impact what the temperature inside the vehicle is?
No.
How do you, and how do you measure that?
And I don't have a direct answer. I know that this was what was requested of the legal department to be brought forward.
Right.
I believe from Animal Control, and we had asked them to be present tonight, and I'm not sure if they had something come up that they weren't able to attend or not.
I'm curious why we're settling on seventy-nine is what it's, as, American Kennel Club said seventy degrees in twenty minutes becomes a hundred-degree car. So that's a fair bit off to go with seventy-nine. So I'm curious as why we...
But the actual temperature in the car has to be seventy-nine. So you could be seventy degrees in your car and...
Oh, does it call it out as the temperature inside the car?
I was going to say, I was just trying, I wondered about...
Ambient, ambient.
Ambient temperature. Well, ambient would...
It just means it, it doesn't take as long to get to seventy-nine as a hundred, right?
It exceeds, if, an ambient temperature which exceeds seventy-nine degrees Fahrenheit.
Right. So that means it's, it probably only takes about five minutes instead of twenty to get to a hundred, basically. Probably, I'm just, I don't know, but that's, that's the difference.
This could, if there are additional questions, this is an ordinance, so options would be first reading and not do second and third, and then we could come back and answer those questions at the next council meeting, and have a representative from Animal Control present. Or we can delete it and bring it back when you're ready for us to do so.
Well, I mean, I mean, since we're in the height of that type of weather, I'm, I guess I would be, I had some questions, but I would be in favor of doing all three readings just to get it on the books, and we can always amend it if the questions are answered in a way that we need to amend it, if the council's okay with that.
I'd agree with that. It's better than what we currently have.
Yeah, yeah, I really don't, yeah, I really don't want to wait a week, so. But this is on the first reading, correct?
Right.
Okay.
I thought I did. I'm sorry. Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Passes 5-0. Twenty-one's a hearing on appeal of Pickle Properties Regarding a Site Plan Approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission for Property at 1720 Morningside Avenue. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open.
Hi, I'm Jason Gary, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. So back in 2015, when we did the ordinance rewrite, one of the options that became available is for the petitioner to come forward on appeal to council if they're unsatisfied with planning, zoning, recommendation. But in this case, we've had the first time where we've got somebody who's adjacent to the property, who feels that they want to be heard on an appeal. So that's what brings us here today. This item came forward as a development agreement. As you guys know, there was a development agreement with the developer to develop a multifamily residential site on, on this location. As the developer went through the process of putting together a basic plan, went through DRC a couple of times, but had to come to us on appeal because there were several deficiencies with the, with the, the site plan that did not meet the code. The primary ones that did not meet the code were a lot of setback issues, because this is a difficult site to put something on, and then also parking, and there are a few other minor issues. So they brought forward those items, and planning, zoning heard those items as, as deficiencies in the site plan. But we also heard from a lot of neighbors who were, expressed frustration about the potential development and had a number of questions, a lot of it related to water runoff and how that's going to be stored, setbacks towards their property lines, access easements, and things of that nature, some of which were in the plan and were addressed, but some of which, some of which has to do with construction that, that we wouldn't normally review. So this item came to you on recommendation to approve on a three-one-one vote. Three in favor. We saw the restrictions on the site, that it was just going to be a difficult site to develop. There wasn't going to be enough parking. If you're going to build something there, it's probably not going to fit the code. And then we had one who felt that there was just too many compromises made on that particular site plan, and then we had one who abstained to a conflict of interest.
Do you think that, um... It's, if it wasn't such a dense project, do you think you could get rid of some of all these different little quirks?
Well, I think...
I mean, twenty-four units seems like quite a few for that site.
Well, I think when it comes to, I, I think as far as setback lines, I'm not necessarily sure. I think the envelope of the building's going to stay the same. The only thing that, that I did bring up, and I think there was just very minimal discussion, was the only way you could really drop down, that if you cut off a third floor and you just make it a two-story, that lowers the parking need, and then they don't need parking agreements from really all the neighbors across the street, and more than likely that you're going to have some overflow parking in the, on the street, and you've already got that on Morningside Avenue. And so, yes, it, but I'm assuming the developer brought that forward because based on the numbers, this is what they need to make it work. And so the, I think the key question is develop or not develop, aside from density and whether or not you want them to take it down a story. And, but they're still, they'd probably need that envelope that they need. For setbacks were probably the biggest thing that had to be modified on our...
So that footprint will stay the same, no matter if it's three or four or five?
I mean, this is where I'll leave it to the engineers and the architects, but I just, from a practical, you know, common sense perspective, I'm like, I don't know how much you can really modify that site, even if you just take it down a story. And then the question is, is it feasible to do that much concrete work and all that sort of stuff and make it cash flow? So, yeah. So it's, it's really a question, develop it like this, develop it like something else, take them back to the drawing board, or, or accept, modify, or probably reject.
I thought there was a question about the dumpster location or something.
That's, that's the...
Yeah, I think that, I think that technically is what brings us up here on appeal. But to be perfectly candid, you know, more than likely, there was a lot of, a lot of folks that were in the neighborhood that questions and opposition to this. And so we, I guess from our perspective, we just brought the whole forward issue, the whole issue forward, and if this is, and, and on appeal to you guys.
So have any of the other concessions been made?
So we, so planning and zoning made concessions primarily on setback and the parking arrangement. There's, there's really no practical way that we could, that they were going to be able to fit their building envelope or parking onto that site with the setbacks that are required by the code. And there was no way they were probably going to do a fit parking either unless they built a ramp. So they, they entered into agreements with everybody else. As far as...
We're just hearing.
Water retention, water runoff, they did meet, as, as, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but they did meet code. They've got underground water retention so that everything that, all the, the rain and moisture that falls on the site will be collected and then, and then put into the sewer system per code. I know that was a, a big concern for a lot of the residents that were, that were, that spoke that night was, you know, water runoff.
Because it's behind them?
Uh, yes, yes. I, yeah, I mean, if you're looking from their perspective, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. It's behind them, and they've, they've already had some, they've declared they've already had some issues, given that they're coming down off a steep hill. That makes sense.
Right.
So, yeah. Any other questions for me?
Just procedurally, before we go any further, because this is on the agenda as a hearing on appeal, we'll go ahead and have a vote of the council to hear the appeal.
Okay.
And then at the conclusion, the council can decide whether it wants to affirm.
Take it back.
I recon, or send it back, have additional time to make a decision or so forth. So...
Paul, Paul, does that, there's a fact that we're having a hearing on an appeal. Does it limit the number of issues that we're looking at, or does it open it back up for everything?
That's, that's been a question that has been asked of us. Essentially, the appeal should be focused on what was initially raised, which I believe is the dumpster location related to the appellant and the situation. The council can choose to hear additional information, but it should be focused on the nature of the appeal and what was filed with the city.
What's the, what would be the procedure if we, if we left everything the way it is? Who can appeal that? The appellant to the, asking for this hearing?
Correct.
Go to the district court?
It would be within the timeframe, yes. The, well, the final action of the council would be today. So then there would be the thirty days to appeal to district court.
Thank you.
Call the rule that must do that for...
Paul, the rule must do that first.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Okane.
Aye.
Janer.
Aye.
Scott.
Okay, now we'll go back to hearing the appeal. Jeff, before we let people talk, what was the original, when Dominowski and Martin and those guys, what was the original plan for the upside of this property? I know what they built was what was planned below, but what was the, what was the, I, I didn't think it was this dense.
I thought it was like row houses or something.
Yeah, like...
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. Because I remember when the condos were being built, because I almost bought one, or the townhomes on the other side. And it was always, when I was looking at buying those, they said the whole time that there were going to be row houses or more units up on Morningside Ave.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. The site plan here on the screen shows what was built on the east side, fronting South St. Albin. What was up on Morningside Avenue, which is address seventeen-twenty Morningside Avenue towards the top, was shown as twelve units in four buildings. More of the, like you say, the, the rural housing, brownstone style structures at that time.
Like a two or three level, but all individual split units?
Two-story, I believe, at the time.
Yeah.
Taking up the same space.
Correct.
But not as dense for parking.
Correct.
Okay.
And not as tall for the neighbors or different things like...
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, somebody wants to be heard? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and go to that one there, ma'am.
Thank you. Velma Ludwig. I live at the top of the hill. Erin and I are neighbors.
Can you give your ad? Give your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Eighteen-eleven South St. Albin.
Thank you.
And of course, I was there when Dominowski was trying to get this developed, and it certainly is, was denied, but it's, this is far worse than what that would be. We're talking about the neighbors, we're talking about the traffic, we're talking about the businesses there, the volume of traffic on the sidewalks, as well as the street. And so, I'm just saying that, that's not really kind of what I, I really wanted to start with. But when I talked to these gentlemen that are trying to develop this, they said that they were trying to target the university, university, Morningside University, the students, which is fine. However, it does cause a few problems for us. A lot would be adding more traffic, more cars, more noise. Okay? And this, the campus is beautiful, and they kind of maintain their beauty. You're probably too, all too young to remember why it's called Peters Park. Anybody know why? There was a park there. Right in the middle of this area was a park. It was beautiful. Trees, bushes, wrought iron fencing, benches for people to sit on. That's how it got its name. And if you've been out there to Morningside, you've seen Drilling Pharmacy, how they spent all that money developing that building to look like Peters Park. Most of our businesses there are these older buildings that have been remodeled and taken care of. So, this stark apartment building, I mean, it's beautiful. I just come from Salt Lake City out there, and they've got many of these, but they look beautiful because they're all together. This would be, pardon my words, but an eyesore. It doesn't fit in with Peters Park or the people around there. Also, there's, they are targeting Morningside University, and I know Morningside University is growing. But I do think we also need to consider all of the residents and the older homes already that people like you and I perhaps maybe own, remodeled, put them in the housing for the students. Okay, if they're going to move over into this building, where, how are these other people going to have their income and their investment? So, also, Morningside Avenue, we, in keeping with our theme, took down a lot of the streetlights, took the money and replaced, we made more lights that would, excuse me, fit into our, our theme. Parking. The gentleman did mention that there would be parking on Morningside Avenue for these students if that's who's going to be occupying, and I know that's what they're aiming for. But however, we already have two apartment buildings there. They're older buildings, and most of their occupants are probably middle com, income or less. There's a small amount of parking in the back on the east side. But majority of these people, if they have a car, have to use that street to park their cars. There's no place else for them. Where will these people go if this big humongous building is there? A lot of these people have to have deliveries. They need pickup from medical and all that kind of thing. This, this is kind of not thinking of those people and the history they have with our city, and they're not being taken care of. If this does grow into fruition, it's also the traffic. We've got the water problem. You guys have all have addressed it, and you know we do have it. We also have a lot of traffic. We have...
I'm going to need you to start wrapping it up, okay?
Oh, you prob, I hope you know about the traffic. We have all the ins, ins and outlets all over. Traffic. We just had another accident last Thursday. I have a picture of it. I can show it to you. Some aren't bad enough, maybe to report it to the police department, but there are an awful lot of, there's just too much traffic to add that many more people. I do have more to say, but I'm going to stop.
Are you talking on the avenue, there was too much traffic and too many accidents?
Oh, yes. Have you been, you've looked at it, haven't you? We got this four-way stoplight.
Yeah.
And we got all these outlets for funeral homes, the university, the, the school. We're heading down past me to go to the library, McDonald's, and another funeral home, two big funeral homes. I took pictures. The cars are guests, the funeral homes' guests do not have a place to park. They're parking in no parking areas. Is this a way to treat our visitors, to add more traffic? At the meeting for the planning and zoning, they said People's Bank offered overflow parking. Well, that's not going to work. And besides, that's not long-term. We're talking about long-term now, aren't we? And these easements that they're offering these people, the people that made those easements knew why they made it. So, there shouldn't necessarily be variances, just because some of them wanted to make a large building, and yes, I'll stop talking, but I have more I want to say.
Thank you. I think he was coming up for...
My name's Jim Daffer. I am managing partner of Pickle Properties LLC, which owns the building just to the north of that. My concern was the, the refuse storage, the dumpster, which is currently planned for four feet off the property line. And there's only less than nine feet along that entire property line to the front doors, or to the entries for ten of the twelve units, and then an eleventh unit, the windows also fade that area. So, I believe that's too close for anybody to have peaceful enjoyment of their home. I do rent to housing people. I have improved the property as best I can, as quickly as I can, just remodel the unit, which would sit right next to that dumpster as proposed. So, I, there's plenty of room on the south side of that property to put that dumpster. I know there's no room on the back. If, you know, I can't argue to put it on the back because it's going to have the same issue. But on the south, there's no residential units next to it. So, they could put it along that south side. I went over there and looked at it today. There's a retaining wall, which I don't even know the reason of most of it because it's one foot difference between one side of the retaining wall and the other. They could easily pull that down. It's probably city property. I don't know. But they could probably put a hole through that and get an entry into the parking lot down there and put the dumpster somewhere in that area. That's my only concern with it. I, I did have somebody approach me to say, look at what was proposed for the initial sale of that property, because it's totally different than what is currently being proposed. The original proposal was for two buildings, not, not what's listed there, which were pushed all the way to the south of that property. And I believe it was competitive issue. Maybe somebody did get it and wanted it, whatever that is. But what was originally proposed for the one dollar sale is not anywhere close to what is proposed now. So, that's my concerns with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, did I, I'm sorry, do you have any questions?
So, is that the ca, when we did sell this, I, you're going to have...
I was going to say, I was going to ask. I don't remember either, or I wanted to think we could look back at what that was too, between Heiserow and Koskovich-Murphy, of what they proposed back then, because they both provided renderings or site plan ideas.
The property has not been sold. As part of the direction from council to proceed forward after that request for proposals, was to work with the selected developer on a site plan. So, that's where we're at today. We will not move forward with the development agreement until this site plan has been approved. But as this gentleman stated, the site plan that was proposed at DRC and ultimately the Planning and Zoning Commission is different than what was originally proposed from the RFP. There's been slight modifications within the site.
Such as?
I'm not sure if we have it in here. It's not in here? I'd have to provide a comparison. We don't have it in the presentation here, but...
Because that's what I was trying to remember too, of what they originally proposed and were thinking and... Yeah, and I'm sure Paul, when he speaks later, he could speak to that as well. I just wondered if it would have addressed some of these, if the original one wouldn't have brought up some of these issues, and then now that we went to this one, is raising some other concerns.
So, this is a site plan that's under discussion, that was approved at Planning and Zoning Commission. The one notable item that's different, obviously, it was during the proposal process, there was two buildings proposed, twelve units per building. The proposed site plan here that was approved at P&amp;Z has combined those two buildings into one structure. And so, obviously, the site plan has changed to modify the design of that building. The dumpster in question is right here.
Gotcha. Is that still entry and egress on the other side, or no, on the south side?
There is no access point over there.
Davis or whatever.
That's been removed. And the, the concern there was to try to keep the traffic up on Morningside Avenue and limit any traffic on the side streets where you have single family.
And it is really close to that south side.
So, what's on the east side there? What is that?
The east side, those boxes that you see on the east side of the building is all the underground stormwater management.
So, you'll be able to drive all the...
That's a driveway.
Come in here and drive all the way around to park on the south side.
Correct. That's all paving on top of the stormwater.
Okay, who else wants to be heard?
Come on up. Thanks, Jeff.
My name's Erin Nelson. I'm at eighteen-oh-nine South St. Albin. I did, wasn't able to attend the planning and zoning meeting, but I did send in a response. And I, some of those we've already dealt with. The water, even though there's that water retention there, my property is the second one that you'll see on the top of the plan from the right corner. That is real close to my house, and, and there isn't any way to keep the runoff there. We already have erosion on both the front and the back. There is no storm sewer in all of Peters Park up there until you get halfway down that block. And so, we have all of the water already running from the Peters Park area, the Morningside Library, all of that comes down. The noise, the HVAC system, it says in section twenty-five-oh-three-one-sixty for the multi-family housing in the information that you have, that the number nine, the design standards, that they don't have to cover up the HVAC because they said it won't be seen. But if you look at attachment F, the view looking north from Garretson, you will see that clearly that HVAC will be visible from the, from Garretson. Also, I'm concerned about the noise coming from an HVAC system to, to be, to, to work with a, a property that size. It's going to be real loud, and our houses are real close to it. Also, smoking and grills. There are supposed to be decks, and because on the front side, it's three stories high, but on the back, it's five stories high from where our, our houses are. And I feel that sparks from smoking materials and also grills could be a real fire danger to us. In addition, that it just doesn't, it doesn't go with the rest of the, of the neighborhood. Five floors also means that the fencing and privacy becomes an issue because everyone on the back of that property can look down into my bedroom. So, I know that, that proximity is an issue. I understand. I think that's a terrible place for the dumpster to be. I also know that the other option is to put it on my end. But, you know, so I think removing the, the extra, I think it's a traffic nightmare as well. Already with the funeral homes and just the businesses that are there, there is usually not on-street parking available. There's just a little bit up in front. So, I think that's a big concern that we need to look at. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there still a street that runs by the Pickle Property? It was like a driveway back in the day. It's the old alley. Is that still there?
Yes.
So, you're going to have two entrances right there? Because that, that would be just up the street a little bit, right?
I don't know. I don't know about the one you're talking about.
What?
It's...
Are you talking about right here?
Yeah.
I don't think that's a through.
That alley is this anymore?
No.
I don't think it goes all the way through.
That's why, because it was part of the old East High Side. I just didn't know.
It's a, it's like a walkway right now, or that's the only thing I was going to use.
Well, there used to be an alley that ran all the way down to the other alley, and that alley ran all the way to my house.
Really?
Because I lived right at the bottom of that. So, I know there was an alley that ran all the way through, so.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
We're only three floors from front and back.
You got to say your name and the address.
Paul Koskovich, twenty-one-oh-six Third Street. We're only three floors front and back, so it's no five floors. Brian did a magnificent job. We are retaining all the water on our site. This is going to be such an improvement from what they have right now, because it sits right now, the wa, the, the ground just slopes back to these neighbors here to the east. Instead, all the cells that are going to be underneath the parking lot are retaining every single bit of water. There's no water leaving our site, zero. This is going to be such an improvement for these people. I mean, as far as the dumpster enclosure goes, the reason Brian put it there is just for access, easy access for the guy driving the roll-off truck.
Yeah.
I mean, they're just, to, you know, to ask the guy to back in or drive around, you know, once a week, it's a nuisance. So, I mean, to put it right there, make it easy access for him, I mean, it makes sense if you drive a, you know, big rig. I don't know. As far as, we had to change architects. The original architect that provided us a rendering, all it was, was just a rendering. I mean, we just submitted, I didn't know you guys were going to take it too serious, but we submitted a rendering. The architect's too busy. We had to switch architects. We went with this guy. I mean, that's it. I think it fits right in. In fact, it probably fits even better than the original architect they used because the original one was really, really modern and stuff that's probably not too city-like. So, I think this actually fits even better. I think it's a really excellent plan for the area. There's plenty of parking. We got a parking agreement across the street. We can go, a couple more neighbors also offer parking agreements. Parking is not an issue. In addition, yes, our target market's the college market. You know, a lot of kids, you know, especially Morningside, they're from, not from the area. Some of them don't even bring cars to school. I mean, they'll be able to walk right across campus, no problems.
How many parking spaces do you show, Paul?
I think on the plan, we show about fighting, I guess, high forties, low fifties, and we need, I think we needed sixty-five. So, we got a parking agreement with People's Bank across the street. They've got ample parking. But again, there's other neighbors that we can get parking, additional parking agreements from. The libraries are across the street. There's on-street parking available. There's plenty of parking in the area. There's also, there's no decks as referenced. There is no decks here.
Oh, there's not?
No decks.
I thought there was on the Ave side.
Nope, we omitted them, just because some people brought up that there's concerns. So, we omitted decks. As far as noise, I mean, you know, an air conditioner, an air conditioner. I mean, you can go over to our District Forty-two apartments that we just built. There's, there's no, those are, those are three stories, ninety-four units a building. You don't hear the air conditioner. You might hear the dog bark, and that's it. I mean, as far as screening, you know, air conditions are visible at their place too. I really think we did a really excellent job fitting this parcel, our building on this parcel. I mean, Brian worked tirelessly on it. Revision, revision, revision to make it work. I mean, we can't, we can't make many other changes here, otherwise it's just not going to work.
You mentioned the library parking.
Mm-hmm.
So, if I'm living in this unit, I can park in the library parking lot and leave my vehicle there?
I mean, I can't speak for sure, but I would assume so. It's public parking, and I don't think there's any signs that says there's no twenty-four hour parking.
Yeah, it's not the library's parking lot to begin with. It's the Peters Park parking lot. So, yes, they can.
So, they could all park?
Anybody can. Is that right?
Yeah.
Or you could park in, they, like you said, they have an agreement with People's Bank, and there was a letter that supported that.
I think they paid for no removal and the maintenance. I can guarantee you they don't, so.
How many bedrooms on the property? Because you have twenty-four units. Are they all two? Is that what you said?
It's the mix of two, twos and threes.
Because I was just trying to do quick math of how many... Because I was just trying to do quick math of how many bedrooms and how many cars are-
I think we have to average one and a half stalls per-
You had to have 60, and you got 40.
No, I, yeah, I was just trying to think of the bedroom one.
All right, could the dump, could the, the dumpster, I think they raised a good point, could you just move it across the parking lot there, Paul?
Uh, where would you like to move it to, Dan?
Pardon?
Where do you want to move it to?
Actually, just, just across in the other parking stall.
I agree. Where he's talking is where that other green dot is, to the right of the entrance. Do you see? Yes, that guy.
Thank you, Jeff.
Because then you could pull forward on the ave, back in that way. I don't know.
I'll defer to Brian. Brian did the civil plan. I'm not sure if it'll work or not.
Well, it works if you move your driveway, but you lose a parking stall.
Brian Wells, DJR Engineering, 61, uh, 6115 Whispering Creek Drive. Yeah, if we move that to the east, if, if the dumpsters are gonna be on wheels, then that, that adds some flexibility. If they're on skids, then, you know, where we show it works best. So a lot of times, you don't know.
Because it gives you the turning radius and stuff.
Right, right.
Well, Koskovich and Murphy dumpster business oughta know what they're gonna put in there, I'm guessing.
We don't service that customer, so unfortunately, we can't service ourselves here. It's a little small for what we operate.
Brian, so it could be done, you said? Okay.
Yeah.
That helps a little bit.
And I do somewhat agree with the water argument. I mean, does that make sense, what he was saying? I know you have drainage issues right now, but what he's saying, I mean, I think, I think it's a decent argument, is that all of that space right now, of the green space that does wash to your backyard, all of that water is now gonna be retained, because they're putting in a system to catch all that in the area. You have to stand up at the microwave, or microphone.
So if, if we look farther on the site plan that direction, then what's, that's what's visible right now? What happens in the area where that's not? Because it looks like the containment systems start really quick for the third lot.
Well, you heard curb and gutter and all the back, you know, the curb and gutter, the backside, and they put a s- That's just showing the storage, but there's other pipes that take the water.
Right.
So like, there will be drains in other places that all run to those storage containers. So the whole property will drain to those.
Okay, and most of the runoff-
Otherwise, they've gotta have a big ditch back there, according to the-
Yeah, most of the prob, most of what we're getting is coming off the paved sections as well. So I was hoping that the green space helped absorb some of the water that we're getting the runoff from the paved, from like the library parking lot area.
Oh, well, and that's, yeah, and that won't, that won't improve this, that won't hurt this, that type of-
And the storm sewer that's going out has enough capacity for this, that you're dumping into?
Yes, sir.
Gordon, did you want to add something?
No, uh, excuse me, that's exactly what I was gonna add, was that it is actually, it's not being retained, it's being detained. And there is a drain out the back.
Right, but you're, you're letting it out slower than what-
Yes, that is correct.
That's why you got the big tube.
That makes sense.
Same thing they did at the Culvers parking lot up on Hamilton.
Yep.
They put all those tubes in the ground, and that's, that's their storage for it. I'm, I kinda think you need to move the-
The dumpster?
The dumpster, I don't, I wouldn't want that right by my back door, I gotta agree.
And I thought where Dan was talking is what I would propose as well, but-
Yeah.
How much parking is in that lot next to, next to the library? How many spaces? Does anybody have any?
Peters Park?
Peters Park, there's probably 60 or so. Go ahead.
Okay, there's two things I'd like to talk about. First of all, I'm 85, I forget things, so I want to bring this one up, back to the parking. I don't think it's fair that you would even consider the Morningside parking for overflow for your patrons, because that park is used for a multiple of things by the Morningside Commercial Club, and everyone that uses the library and et cetera. So it wouldn't be a really a good choice to consider that for overflow parking for them. Also, getting back to the water, I know they were up there and testing the land. Could I ask you, what were you doing when you, what type of test were you taking when you were testing?
Probably the geotechnical engineer soil boring tests.
Okay, I mean, did you run into any, I don't know the proper word. Anyway, there is, as I'm, it's right above me, and there, as I've lived there eight years, it's sinking. Where is this going? Here's one more point. I have not called the city about this, but maybe you guys can. I noticed, and I see a lot of this stuff, because I'm a walker. The old post office, I noticed the other day, on the northwest corner, has all fallen in. Where's it gone? Another thing is, they have resurfaced Orleans Avenue, which is, was really, really good. But for many, many years, it was so cracked and broken, that there was a lot of water that was seeping in, and I, I'll tell you how I know this, is because I live with where the wall is, and they built these drainage, what do you call them, to release the water, so that the, it doesn't, well, there's, there's dirt coming down into my yard all the time. So now, it's not gonna be as bad, because it surfaced, so it's not gonna come from on top. But it's still coming from someplace, because if you go and look, Bob, it's right there in the corner, really deep. And, and nobody sees it, see, because it's not in a corner that anybody would see it unless you were actually walking. But, um, and, and I think, and as I mentioned, you guys had mentioned, there would be an overflow on People's Bank too, that people could park. You know, we gotta think long-term here, not just something maybe within the next five or 10 years. Personally, it, the building is too big, it's just absolutely too big. It would just be taller than anything we have in the area. Maybe two stories would be better, but to three? And then also, as Erin mentioned, the garbage that's gonna come off of there. I mean, um, people just throw things out the window all the time, and then these kids are gonna drop, you were told, I was told you were aiming for the students, is, am I incorrect or correct?
Yeah, I mean, this is-
Yeah, I, I mean, that's honest, because that's what I was told, so kids are the habit of not picking up behind themselves. So unless we have some kind of protection, I was known for its wind, and it's gonna come right across down onto our property. Because right now, it comes down onto our property. And then as far as the drainage barrels, or whatever you wanna call them, those are fairly new, aren't they, in the industry? I mean, there, there's no history on their life expectancy?
No, we'll either store it in pipes, or we'll store it in chambers.
Either way, are they, do they have any life expectancy?
Yeah, so the pipes would be just like we have under all our streets.
And then this drainage that you're going to attach them to, where is that going to come out at?
That goes out in the alley.
It goes out where?
In the alley to the north.
What, what alley?
The east-west alley, or the north-south alley behind Pickle Properties.
Behind the Pickle Property, that's just a short. Also, um, all of this water, not only do, are we affected, but all the next whole block is too, because we have rivers coming down from all of the streets, coming down in front of us. So you're gonna absorb some of that, perhaps, from coming down, but it's still gonna come out someplace. So into the storm sewers, and, and I don't know whether the storm sewers are large enough for it or not. You're telling me, Erin, you're the engineer, and so you probably know, but it's still a concern, when you live this long, that sometimes things aren't always what they seem.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, again, between our site plan and our parking agreement, we have plenty of spots. I'm just offering the library as additional options, off-street parking as additional options. We mean code right out, easily.
Jeff, where, where are the two, the two citizens that spoke, where do their, where's their property?
Right here. Right here.
These two right here?
South end?
Right there.
Right here.
You've got a wall on the side of your property, which is the old wall for the East High, because there was a, you, somebody was asking the Pickle, that, there used to, the school used to sit inside that wall, and when they took East High out, they filled it back in. The school was about 10 foot away from the wall back when I went there, and the auto shop was in the basement, and-
How many, how many floors was the school at that time?
It was two on that, where she's at, it was two, but it was-
For two above ground and one below ground.
We're also gonna have a fence.
Well, there were three- Yeah, but there were, there were at least, well, maybe there was only, maybe there was only three, but there was a smokestack that was very tall in front of my house, so.
There's also gonna be a fence above our retaining wall, could probably catch any garbage she's referencing, but I think as you guys know, we do a good job keeping our properties looking nice.
Okay, so what's the wishes of the council? Did you, did, did you have something to say about the dumpster?
I have to keep this highlighted, I don't know if you can show it on the projector there or not, um, yeah.
So the old alley that went with East High, Jeff, it didn't go with Pickle Property. The old alley between Pickle Property and East High.
Line ends at that sidewalk?
All right, that, that answers the question. So they, we acquired that alley from the school district then, basically, when we shut it down.
Believe so.
We don't see your screen, Jeff, we're looking at the projector.
I can switch it back.
Just came up on the projector.
Now we might have switched back.
You know, Paul, a beacon for you.
And you, you agree then, all the water will be contained on the side?
Stormwater?
Stormwater.
Yeah, yeah, there's a curb along the whole east side, just above the wall. And all the, all of the paving will drain to intakes and underground storage, and then it outlets to the north to the storm sewer in the alley.
Okay. Will it be able to handle a three-inch rain like we had a couple of years ago?
Yep, it'll be designed to city, city standards.
Well, city standards may not handle a three-
No, it, it stores 100-year storm, releases a 10-year and a 100-year storm, so.
So unfortunately, he's not able to get that on there. Can you just bring up the regular one? At least if you want to grab that.
Sure.
This process was started before this gentleman even bought this building, so we already knew that there was gonna be apartments, whether there was ours or Dan's.
On the top of it, Jeff?
No, I did not know that in any way, shape, or form. I was told that there was a project that was gonna take up the whole block potentially, but it fell through. And I don't care.
That, that, we're not gonna argue, not gonna argue that kind of stuff today. What are we showing here, Jeff?
Okay, anyway, the dumpster is, is highlighted in orange at the front. Over on the blue is where, you know, I proposed putting one, would it be possible to put a, to put a double-sided dumpster enclosure? One where the, the truck could get from the street side, and one where the pedestrian, or the tenants could put in from the building side. It wouldn't take that much more pavement, and it would handle my situation, which is, you know, I have 12 units, you know, 24 to 30-some people living in that building. And, you know, I see, I recognize that you acknowledged that's unacceptable, but as far as places to go, because I can see down the road that they say, well, let's put it back at the, the back northeast corner, which is where, kinda where their drainage area is, but that's still within distance of tenants' windows and stuff, so. I did not highlight that, but can I point, if they see it? You know, back here, I could see that as where they would, might come up with a solution, and I would oppose that. In addition, because the yellow areas are where the main entry doors are for this building. So anything along that side would not be acceptable.
Dan's proposal was there.
Right, and I would agree with that, but then they're gonna have the same situation, it's gonna be within, you know, 12 feet of whoever lives on that corner of the building, so. So they're gonna oppose that, they may not oppose it today, but-
Well, probably not 12 feet, but yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, I-
He's gonna move it.
I think they would be open to that. I've, I've never heard of a double-sided dumpster or anything, is that even possible over on that side, if you wanted to do that over there, to where you-
Are you gonna be street height over there?
Uh, yeah.
Why aren't you putting, I'm just asking, why aren't you putting a driveway off the street?
Well, we take out more parking.
Oh, you take out parking.
We looked at that.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
Wherever the dumpster is located, the code does require a full dumpster enclosure to either be built of masonry or match the building, so that's already part of the site plan, and that is not being asked to waive. So wherever it's chosen, it'll require an enclosure, as well as fencing on the front for a gate.
Okay, what's the council want to do?
I'd like to proceed with the development.
What's that?
I'd like to proceed so that the development can proceed.
But you gotta-
What are we voting?
Do you have to make a motion as far as the dumpster goes? That's what we're here for, correct?
Sure, that, the council could choose to, to affirm, modify it, or reverse.
Okay, well, let's move to modify.
Jeff, could you just go through your slides again?
Well, and I'd like to hear some of the concerns maybe that Jason and they heard as well, or some of the thoughts they had to make sure we're addressing, I mean-
Did they take care of Mr. Melonowski on the water issues?
They, so, I, Mr. Melonowski kinda spoke for a number of people in the crowd, because we had about half the, half the room filled with, with neighbors, so it's much different than it is today, and he kinda spoke, kind of like off of a list of multiple issues. But water was by far, in a way, the biggest one, setbacks. And setbacks, parking, the, the same issues that you're hearing today are the issues that we're here. The only issue that was raised, that was not raised at P&amp;Z, was that, you know, there had been multiple developments in the past that have been proposed for this. We didn't review that, because we just review what's in front of us, and whether does, does this meet or not, and will it work or not? And as far as the parking, and, and as far as parking and setbacks, we've made those setback compromises before. And in parking, we've done it before, the, the downtown apartment buildings that's right off of Fourth, we had to make compromises on their parking site to make it viable, so it's not as though it's a bridge we haven't crossed before. Well, yeah, we can go through this, and then I have one more suggestion, I guess.
Well, what's in front of you is a presentation that was provided to P&amp;Z, so it's a, a series of slides that we went through. So I don't know if you want to go through the whole thing, or just highlight, okay?
I think just highlight and just kinda zip through.
Well, that was a little quick, let's slow down.
I gotta get back to the top here.
Gotcha, buddy.
Well, here's an area I'll just show in the site plan that's highlighted on top of the area that we've been discussing. This is the site plan that we've had on the screen a few different times here, that's being proposed, and that was all-
So we went from two buildings to the one building?
From the request for proposals, it went from two buildings to one with this site plan, correct?
Same number of units.
Same number of-
Same number, yeah, 12 and 12, but now it's 24 in one building, okay.
Correct.
Here is just the history of the site in question, and we've also talked about what the Domonowski Group had originally proposed. And this lays out that site plan that was shown a number of years ago. Those, what those structures were proposed at that time during the request for proposal, the first go-around. This is the history of when it went through DRC as a proposed site plan that we're reviewing today, and what standards were listed in each of those areas. Go ahead.
I don't know, it's probably here nor there, but I mean, looking back at what was proposed at that time is almost irrelevant now, because it's like, I would really like to go back to that, but you could probably cash flow, or at least make that work back then, because of costs and where things were at. And now today, I mean, I understand they're probably in a pinch that you have to go higher, you have to go more units, in order to make it financially work. I would assume, I mean, would, is that a safe assumption?
I would leave that up to the developer and the owner on whether that could have worked now versus back then.
I don't know. I mean, I'm guessing, I, I don't need an answer, but-
These are the elevations that were shown during the planning and zoning and the DRC meeting. I would point out that the, all four sides of this building do meet our design standards. There is no request for any design standard waivers. Just another view of those building elevations. Got into the actual site plan about where the setback reductions were at, what the design of the buildings would look like. These are all the standards that Chris laid out during our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Again, no waivers on the design standards. Only surface parking lots are proposed, has a flat roof system. Ground-mounted equipment, as mentioned before, it's not visible from the right-of-way. There's no roof-mounted equipment shown on any of the renderings, and we're not expecting to see any roof- There's no roof-mounted equipment shown on any of the renderings, and we're not expecting to see any roof-mounted equipment. Uh, parking lot and building light, um, plans were shown as part of the original package to DRC. Uh, the sidewalk, there was one waiver on that, I'll show that at the end, that was a waiver on the south side of the front of the building. Uh, seven-foot versus ten-foot. Trash receptacles and, and the benches were shown, in this case, they've decided to combine the benches along Morningside Avenue, uh, right behind the sidewalk, so it'll keep all the pedestrian activity and any other activity from the apartment complex on the Morningside Avenue side versus having on the backside. This is the setbacks, uh, front yard setback was twenty-five, what's being shown is fourteen. Again, this was, um, at the recommendation of DGR and also to meet the setbacks in the rear of the property. Again, we're trying to bring all the activity in the building face up to Morningside Avenue, which would have a similar parent to the rest of the neighborhood on Morningside Avenue. The landscaping requirements were met, uh, we've talked about parking, sixty required, forty is shown onsite, on-premise, uh, with a parking agreement at People's Bank, which is allowed by code, so it does meet that requirement. Pedestrian access, there's two sidewalks shown from the public sidewalks, no storage is provided. The site triangle is met on Morningside Avenue, there was an issue at DRC, but that has now since been resolved. And then, of course, the dumpster enclosure and the waiver for that request, as we've talked about. The site access, uh, was ultimately approved as part of the site plan. Stormwater detention is all underground. The signage requires a conditional sign permit, uh, in this case, it was approved as part of a sign envelope with the site plan. Ultimately, they'll have to get a sign permit when that's installed, and they're showing one freestanding sign, uh, which is allowed through the approved site plan. That's a rendering of the sign.
When, if you move the garbage can over to the other side of the lot, he's almost in the thirty-foot, isn't he? Gotta be close.
That's what I was thinking.
For this thirty-foot setback? Yeah, it would be close. Yeah, 'cause the driveway itself's twenty-four foot wide, and twelve foot and twelve foot, so.
Probably six foot in the parking stall.
These are just some photos that were shown.
They're building a Keystone wall in the back here? And fencing that.
Above it, yeah.
So the neighbors' properties here that we're talking about would be to the, the right, towards the bottom side of that slope. This is a summary of those waivers that were shown and were ultimately approved by council, the appeal is based on the one dumpster enclosure setback, the thirty-foot to the four-foot.
Alright, what are we gonna do here? I got a ballgame to go to.
I have a couple, I have just a couple of questions on, I'll try to be quick, on Orleans, is there parking on the street?
Yeah.
I believe there's parking on the south side, the north side, I'm not sure if there's on-street parking, are there both sides?
Is there, I just wanna make sure that that's painted.
Both sides, and it gets narrow the further east you go, it's a little wider back with the school side, but yeah, it's, there's parking on both sides.
The other thing that I was just gonna suggest that I would like to see as a part of this, 'cause I do think, okay, good. Whether we stripe it or whatever we wanna do, just to make sure that people know they can at least park there, I think that'd be important too. 'Cause I'd rather have them park there than across the street at People's Bank. 'Cause the, the other recommendation that I was gonna make, and I don't know whether we want this as part of a development agreement or not, I'm, I've never done this part of it, but maybe it's possible. I do really worry about the amount of people that will be walking across the street there, um, from that apartment complex, crossing that street. I've done that on a number of occasions, and it's already dicey. Ever since they took that light out, I mean, I used to use that light all the time to try to cross there, because you come out right there on, is that Garrettson? Yeah, you come out on Garrettson and there's nowhere to cross. You either go down to the light all the way at Transit and the Ave where it bends, or, or, yeah, you have to go all the way down to Peters. So I guess what I'm recommending is, you know they're gonna cross right there at Garrettson. That's where they're gonna go across, is, is my guess, and so what I would ask is that we have a flashing pedestrian light. If, well, or just some type of something, some type of marking. What I saw in Cedar Falls that I really liked in one of their intersections where it wasn't lit, or no, it was actually in Papillion, is they had flashing pedestrian signs, and then in the middle of the road, where like the double-yellow would be, um, it had those like little things that can flap if they're hit or whatever that say pedestrian crossing on them, and then have reflectors on them. I just think we really need to be intentional or just really put some things in there so that people know to slow down, because I do drive this stretch every single day, and, well, or at least I might go a different route, but almost every single day. And it is really, people get going a good clip right there on Morningside Ave, and so I would do anything to try to improve that safety and pedestrian safety there. I think if we can write that in to where the developers work with engineering to make sure that that's improved, however we wanna do it, I don't know how to make that a, a part of the amendment that you're gonna, or proposal that you're gonna make, but, or if we can.
You can only consider the underlying site plan action before planning and zoning, so if there is direction related to the development agreement, that would have to come in a later time.
Okay.
Or just, uh, the council could consider the dumpster placement for purposes of today's hearing.
Well, at least then I said my piece and we can go from there.
And I think that's important to note too, though, is that what we are hearing and, and is the appeal on the dumpster placement, which has been addressed.
And some of the other concerns, which I feel were at least adequately. Oh, one other question that I had just while you were here, Paul, can I have you a second up here? The only other question I was gonna ask, and I don't know for fire safety, that backside of that, are those windows gonna be able to open? The backside facing east? Do those windows open?
I would assume so, yeah.
'Cause I guess what I'm wondering is, and I, again, for fire, fire safety, I don't know if you have to allow them to open to have the screens for exit or something like that. What I'm thinking is if I had those homes, I would just worry about if people are gonna open them, if noise, then, you know what I mean? If people are, having a lot of people or if they're loud, loud music, whatever, the noise pollution that could get out that way, or if they wanted. I don't think they're going to throw things out of the window as you're describing, but I mean, maybe it would address that. I just didn't know if there was a way to make it so those windows weren't opening, or if that's a safety concern.
Yeah, I'd have to check with, uh, city code and architecture.
It was just a thought to try to meet another of their concern, if you wanna look into it, you can, but. That's all I had.
One more time.
Uh, through the discussions, I've come to another issue that's, uh, gonna be a primary concern is the driving, uh, the entry for the parking lot. There's gonna be forty cars coming in and out of there, flashing their lights on everybody on the first floor, um, as they go by. So that's, that's a new concern that I have, um, so it'd be possible to get some type of.
Fence.
Privacy wall erected there, and then additionally, I'm not sure that wall is actually on my property. I believe that was probably built when the school was built.
Oh, it's on your property. There was an alley that ran from Morningside Avenue to South Lane Alvin, it was right-of-way for a hundred years. So that, your property is probably your property, because it was always on the side of that alley back in the day.
Okay.
The alley ran all the way through, 'cause I used to, I mean, I'm, my house was right where that alley is, and if I wanted to go to East Junior, well, I did the back way, but if I wanted to go to Morningside College, I walked up that alley, it's always been the alley. Your, in fact, your driveway or your walkway was higher than the alley by a few feet back.
Okay. Yeah, I, I used to live at your property, so he's, he's right on the money there, so, that alley used to be there.
Jeff, I, I thought I saw something in there about the lighting, though. Wasn't there?
Parking lot light.
I believe he's referring to vehicle lighting.
Yeah.
Parking lot lighting.
Which.
He's worried about.
Yes, people, which.
Tenants driving in and flashes through their living room window or something.
Which I could see that too. So Paul, maybe as you're looking at concessions, or if you're able to make concessions, when people are pulling into that parking lot, the lights would shine in, so maybe behind those parking spaces, if there was a ten-foot fence or something, it would have blocked that.
Go back to the picture, just a minute, Alex, go back to the picture you just had.
What are you looking at?
Well, I'm gonna show you what I'm looking at. If Jeff can find it, no. Go back. The, no, let's stop right there, this already is elevated. Now, I don't know where his parking driveway's gonna come in, but it's already elevated here.
I think what he's saying, or what I would guess, is those first five windows or whatever are the only ones.
I'm just telling you that it's, that some of the, but it's elevated, so I'm not sure you're gonna solve all of that, but I, I mean, whatever, whatever you guys wanna do, I just. We're here to talk about.
The dumpster.
The dumpster.
Alright. There we go.
I mean, I'd like to talk about a whole lot of other stuff, but we have to confine what we're gonna do with the dumpster. So somebody can make a motion to keep it, somebody can make a motion to move it, somebody can make a motion to reject the whole site plan. That's our three options, is it not?
I think Julie had a motion then.
You can work with, with Paul and Jeff on a development agreement that may require that fence.
Sure.
But, but I don't think we can do anything with that today, is what I'm saying, and.
I was just trying to meet some of the citizen concerns that were here.
I know you guys are not gonna agree, and I hope that I am right, but history has shown with the type of holding ponds that we put in, your property will be better than it is today. Now, I'm not gonna argue the other stuff, you, you have a right to your opinion on that, and, and I share some of your concerns, but unfortunately, that's not something we get to talk about, but, but as far as the drainage, it will be improved, I'm convinced of that, because nobody thought the Culvers parking lot would look, work quite frankly like it's working, and if you ever dug that up, you'd find great big tubes underneath Culvers, it's full of those pipes, and alls they're doing is holding water and letting it out very slowly, so, so. Who wants to make a motion? Well, yeah, what was it?
I'm gonna move to approve the site plan with a modification of moving the dumpster.
To the, you gotta tell them where.
Oh, to the right, to the other.
To the south.
South.
There are second.
Second. Or whatever.
You're gonna have to call the roll, ain't it?
Yes. Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
I'm gonna vote aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Alright. Downtown Partners Quarterly Update.
Apparently you got five minutes, no, I'm just kidding.
I know.
Oh, wait, one second, ladies. Where is she at?
No, it's Chris Wall, not Cindy.
Yeah. Cindy. Or Cindy, oh, Cindy right there.
Cindy, come in and tell us about your dog ordinance today. Dan had some questions, let's get them answered. Sorry.
Hi. Hi, so off, we apologize for being late, as we were leaving to come here today, we had a pretty horrific case that came in, and it's actually still ongoing now, which kinda held us up from, from coming here. Um, the, the whole, um, deal with this was the previous ordinance was vague in that it said dogs cannot be in excessively hot vehicles. Well, that was open to interpretation, um, we looked at, um.
Chris, can you speak just a little closer to the mic, just 'cause people I think are gonna wanna listen to this and.
And sorry, Chris, if you could state your name and information as well, just for purposes of the recording.
Chris Wall, C-H-R-I-S-W-A-L-L, 2400 Hawkeye Drive. Um, the ordinance previously, um, was pretty vague in that it mentioned that animals could not be in excessively hot vehicles. There was no, um, definite yardstick, and we've had cases that have actually been thrown out because there's been a difference of opinion between us in the courts as to what was hot and, and what wasn't. Um, one of the, um, just happened to come up on my Facebook, it was another city that brought in the seventy-nine degrees, um, and they elaborated on what their ordinances were going to be at the time. Allowed, um, animals to be in cars if the air conditioning was on. And it was also one of those things, it was at the ambient temperature outside, so I did some, I did some research, couldn't find seventy-nine degrees, but I found eighty degrees, and within ten minutes, a car would typically be ninety-nine degrees inside, and within thirty minutes, it'll be a hundred and fourteen degrees inside. So it gets up real hot real quick, and then I sent Caleb at the legal department, there was a, um, a video of veterinarian who, uh, went outside his clinic on his break time, um, and was just monitoring the temperature with the windows cracked in the cars and all this kinda stuff, and, um, and it got real hot, real quick. Um, so it's one of those things where it was, it was ambiguous before, but now there's a definite kind of a, a target.
A threshold, at least.
A threshold where we know that we're good to prosecute a case, or no, we don't have a case at that point.
Chris, my question was just quick, how do you tell the temperature? Do you guys keep a gauge, or is there a gauge you're able to?
Yeah, we, we have, um, two, two things, obviously, most, most people have got, um, apps with the, the temperature on it, and we also have the heat guns that we can sort of fire into the vehicle and, and, and get a display of the temperature that way too.
Great.
My question was, does it make a difference if the windows are partway down?
From the, from the video that was shown with the veterinarian in the vehicle, he had all four of his windows that were sort of cracked two inches, um, and he said, you can tell that the leaves and trees were blowing outside, but he said, I feel absolutely nothing inside, inside of my vehicle, inside, nothing. So, so it, it was put in the ordinance now where, um, animals could stay in the vehicle, um, in excess of seventy-nine degrees, providing that the engine's on with the air conditioning running as well. Um, and it also stops people from tying up their dogs in the, in the back of like a pickup bed truck, that kinda thing. Again, if it's, if it's the, the seventy-nine, that is no longer gonna be acceptable either.
And is it seventy-nine interior or exterior your temperature?
Exterior.
Exterior.
So seventy-nine ambient temperature outside, which again goes up to ninety-nine and a hundred and fourteen within ten and thirty minutes inside the vehicle, so seventy-nine degrees outside.
So if it's above seventy-nine degrees outside?
Yeah.
You have to have the windows closed with the AC on in order to have an animal?
Or preferably don't have your dog in the car at all.
Correct.
Yeah.
That would be the preference.
Yeah.
I'm somewhat supportive, but it's amazing to me, we, we have a dog ordinance now and don't have a kid ordinance with the same parameters. It's totally unbelievable, and I know you're gonna say child endangerment, but you know what, if you had defined definition of what that is. I'm sorry, kids are, I mean, I'm not anti-dog, but pets, but kids are a heck of a lot more important to me than a dog or a cat, I tell you.
I get it, but we were, we were asked previously, and we've, and we've had cases thrown out because there was no specific number in place. And we were basically told, hey, you know, what people figure to be excessive is open to discretion.
I wonder if, if other communities have that mayor or not, I don't know.
I don't know, but.
For kids, at least.
They have the same problem, the police have the same problem, I think prosecuting child endangerment and defining what that is.
We, we're noticing, the more it goes, everything has to be kinda laid out black and white, otherwise you just can't get through.
Alright, and I don't know what the statistics would show about animal survive, survival as, as opposed to baby survival. I mean, at least the stories I've read, it's too late, I mean, the, the baby is gone.
Actually, the, the.
But I don't know how the animals, do they, do they survive that, or is it?
Well, we've, we've had a few cases, we've had a few cases so far this year where people have called in, you know, a dog at a, a major, um, mall or a store. They've given us the vehicle details, by the time we've gone out there, the vehicle is gone, so we've not actually caught anybody this year. But as we were leaving this afternoon, there is a, um, a, a dead dog case that's, that's come in from a dog that was left outside, not in a vehicle, but it was left outside all afternoon, and, and that died.
Yeah, and we've had cases like that brought before the council, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
Where there have been complaints about tying up the dog outside.
Sure.
Do you feel like seventy-nine degrees is a, a good jumping off point? I, uh, the American Kennel Club said seventy degrees.
It was, it was something that I initially passed to, um, the legal department, that was taken from another city who, in all fairness, it looks like they did their due diligence in coming up with that number, they have a similar kind of heat extremes, um, that we do, and it's something that they're, that they're running with. So it's, it's like, okay, we, you know, they've obviously given this one some thought, and it, it seemed like a, a good number, and again, even at the, even at seventy-nine, within the ten minutes and the thirty minutes, you know, you're up to ninety-nine and a hundred and fourteen, and that's a, that's a seventy-nine.
How long does it take you to respond to one of these calls typically?
Those calls are put in as priority one, uh, so we have thirty minutes to attend. It's basically when a priority one call comes in, whatever the guys are doing, unless it's another priority one call, drop it and get over there and take care of that one. Of course, by the time we usually drive across town or whatever to get to the call, like I said, in these cases, that, that people have typically driven off, we've not had to cite anybody this year because they, they, there's been no view there when we got there.
Thanks, Chris, for all you're doing.
Yeah, appreciate you both being here.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Reg and Cody with Downtown Partners, for your street with me today is Carly Howery. She's our business development coordinator, she's been with us, um, since last December, and has been, if you look at social media, she's the expert behind all of that, so. Brought her with me today to update you on a couple of things. Our board of directors, uh, I think Anne's the only one that stuck around today, and threw this all, but we have a great board, um, truly, this is a, this is a strong group. We have someone from the schools and a lot of stakeholders in downtown that make things happen. Just a quick look at our budget. Just a quick look at our budget from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, just showing you that we do take a lot of pride in the projects that we're working on, and also a lot of the money is going into projects that we're working on. We're keeping that at the same rate come into our next year, but we're also raising our business support by 8%. A lot of things that businesses are working on and, and could use some help with, we've noticed that in our budget and are gonna reflect that for the next year. One of the projects that you saw on the cover sheet there, and including some others, we do have a project kind of map for our lighting enhancements that we've been working on downtown. The two Festoon Lights, or Party Lights, whatever you wanna call them, on Court and Pearl on Fourth Street, kind of bookend what we're calling our pedestrian walkway. This walkway has been kind of targeted because it has a lot of dark spots as we move from each of our entertainment districts, so looking at lighting enhancements through there. The first you've seen just recently is the LED colored light underneath the Skywalks. Those went up just last week and are kind of stuck on this color while we test some of the lighting, and then there's a lot that we can do with these lights, a lot that we are working with the city on to make sure they don't shine green or shine red, because there's, you know, the streetlights that we have to consider, the things, and, and what we can do with them is, is really enhance, and AIA comes, we have basketballs that can bounce, you know, across them. We can do a lot with them, so it was a great enhancement. The other thing you saw today was some of our funding going to the city to help us with this lighting project in Pearl Street Park. We went ahead and purchased the seating at first, but there's some other things we need to work on that hopefully the city can help us with, with some of the seating more for Food Truck Fridays, also a pergola to get some shade and some electricity needs. So the downtown lighting, these are just the pieces. You'll see it during the day, they glow, they don't glow, they're just white. So we've got the bench that you see up there, also in a wishbone form, and also the love seat. Now, at night, those can shine just about any color we decide to click them on to, so we can change that up and get some illuminated seating, which makes for great social posts. So we're looking forward to that, and it was very affordable and something that will enhance that area and brighten it up a bit. The other thing, since it is spring, we see a lot with planters and with trash right now. We did purchase some new planters over in the historic Fourth District that we are trying out. These are self-watering planters. This is gonna save us some funding when it comes to watering. We're out there every night when it's hot and every other night when we've got a little leeway. So being able to fill these planters, they'll last for two weeks in our environment and in our climate. We've tested that because Western Iowa Tech has these planters out on their campus, so we've worked with them on how well they've been working with theirs. So we've got new black planters to try and work with that. The other thing is, we did purchase more trash cans to be placed around the promenade area. We see a lot, even on Free Movie Tuesdays and different things, there's been a lot of litter in that area noticeably over the last year and a half, so we did purchase more containers to hopefully help mediate that problem a little bit. One initiative that we're working on with the city and with the state of Iowa is the 22122. This'll start this Wednesday, June 22nd. This is where we pick up 22 pieces of litter on the 22nd day of each month, and then each year it will go into the next, for 23, for 23. One of the things here, and Judy Kellen is with me, Lieutenant Kellen, usually monitors this group. We meet quarterly with the police department and all of these partners listed on here to work on downtown crime prevention. We get that a lot lately on, not only homelessness, but different options and, and things that we run into in alleyways. We can come up with a whole gamut of, of things that we talk about. But on the right-hand side there, this is the topic list that we cover every time we meet. So everything to do with housing, the parking ramps, crime prevention, and there's also a safety and security in downtown Sioux City piece that we've sent out to all of our businesses and residents with the help of the police department. They've been beneficial in so very many ways. The non-emergency number that we give out to them, they also have direct officer emails, so if they are in an area that, they're able to work directly with that officer, and so you get a very timely response. They've been wonderful about getting to areas where, when we call on something, or if a business calls on something, they're out there talking to them immediately. The facade program you are aware of, this just passed council this, this spring, and will start funding July 1. We've had some calls already, but this has opened up tomorrow at our stakeholder meeting is when we'll launch this program for our stakeholders. This is, application deadline is July 29th, but we've already had a lot of interest in this, so we're really hoping that, that this helps on some of our larger facade programs. One of the other things we've recently started working on is, we just received all of the final reports from the bike lane studies, that Simco did, the pedestrian studies, the Skywalk studies. Basically, every time we hear the word "studies," we don't want it to sit on a shelf, so we really need to do something with it. So our attempt at this first piece is, those renderings that you see up there are all things that came in each of those plans. What it's missing is the one that we have circled there, what it really would look like on the streets of Sioux City. We're targeting three corridors, one of which is the core of downtown, the Pierce Street, Nebraska Street, Fifth, Sixth area, to see how Fifth and Sixth can function, also how you get to the riverfront on Pierce Street and Virginia Street corridors, how that could look differently incorporating some of the things that they recommended from those plans. So really, this first plan is just about showing you what all of these plans are telling you, to try and get some feedback and some generation of, of what we can do for our next projects. Also, in this group, they've been working on business recruitment packages. This is looking a little bit more at some of our vacant spaces and how we can really target what businesses we wanna see in downtown and where we wanna see them. So how we can best help get the right people in the right spots and fill some of these spots. So more will be coming on that. And with that, I'll hand it over to Carly to give you social media.
Hi, my name is Carly. I've been running the social media since December, as Reagan stated. What is on your screen is the level of engagement that the Downtown Partners Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook have had in the last fiscal year, from July of 2021 until now, June of 2022. As you can see, it's all green numbers. It's what we like to see, the arrows going up. It's interesting to look at our most popular areas, which are November and December, which we credit to our 12 days of giveaway, as well as our most popular post of 2021, which was the Holiday Cheer Lighted Parade. Now, to look forward into more summer events that we have planned, as you can see, there's Alley Art Festival happening in September, Downtown Live currently happening, Food Truck Fridays, the Mardi Gras Parade, and so on and so forth. What's really important here is that we have a QR code in the middle that you can actually scan now, or see later, that will be posted all throughout downtown businesses that you can see will lead to our website and all the event postings that businesses can do, or I can do myself in the future.
If you can go back one. Carly, I think that's a really important point that I just wanna emphasize while we're still on here, if people are listening or tuning in, or if it's reported on later. I think this is one of those cool things where a lot of people are looking for an event calendar of types, or you know, things that, where they can go to find out what's happening, or hey, we have people visiting our community, or they're stopping in for the weekend, what should we do? I just wanna emphasize that people can reach out to you, or they can post their own events. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Through our website, after you claim your business listing, you are able to post your events for approval, for Reagan and I to approve, and will be posted to our website and featured to our weekly e-blast that gets sent out once a week on Wednesday. And these QR codes will be window clings leading to our website to do so.
Perfect. So if there's any events downtown, anyone wants to include theirs, they just have to register and approve? Great. Sorry.
No, perfect. Another event that we're gonna focus our efforts on are coming in October. It's gonna be a tailgate party in downtown, where anything that you can find at a tailgate, you will find in the streets of Sioux City, which we're excited about. There's gonna be live music, cornhole tournament, food, drinks, and big screens. What else do you need? We will be partnering with Remax Preferred and a few other organizations, and have more details to, to come, but we're very excited for this event.
And finally, just to remind you, when you're gonna see us again, we will update you quarterly. We really appreciate your time in doing this. We hope it's helpful for you to know what's going on in downtown and what we've been working on. SMID renewal, we do every five years. That's coming up again for 2023. So in our timeline, basically at this point in time, we put everything together. We put the map and all the details together for all of our property owners. Each of them have the opportunity to sign or not sign, and then we bring all of the results to you so that you can vote on that effectively the first of next year. I think that's it.
I just wanna say, Reagan and Carly, Downtown Partners, in my opinion, you're an essential part, success of downtown, and you're good partners with the city of Sioux City, and I appreciate all the hard work you do. If you go back to that bike lane photo, drawings you had, I called Reagan, I don't even know if I called or text you, but look how clean that looks. And that's gonna be our goal for downtown Sioux City, is to have it clean. So we, we have some ideas we talked about. I think you're gonna visit with your board about it. I've talked with Mr. Padmore about some things that we can do to actually make a difference, because it kinda goes hand in hand with all the hard work you're doing. I don't, I don't wanna see it change as far as keeping it clean, so.
Well, and it's just the infrastructure component. Yeah, you're exactly right.
So no, just appreciate all that you've been doing and that you continue to do, so thank you for that. Mm-hmm.
That's great.
Thank you. Anyone else be heard from the audience?
Thanks a lot.
I do have one question. So one common complaint that we get from people that live downtown is regarding homelessness, so I was just curious what Downtown Partners is doing specifically to address homelessness or to help those suffering from homelessness?
That's really why we make sure that we meet with the police department on a regular basis. We've got a couple things and, and items and issues that we work on that when you, it's, I wish it was the flick of a wand, that it was just that easy to have a result from, but it's the combination of so many things that we've been working on for years that have gradually made it better and gotten the resources out that, that hopefully they need. I mean, the city's done a great job. After we started the Sulan Street Project with SHIP, gosh, what was that, almost five years ago, a lot has been accomplished since that came to the table. We took great pride in helping start that because we heard from businesses going, "I don't feel safe," or "I want this addressed," and not knowing how to do that ourselves, obviously. You need the police department, you need those partnerships in place. So the meetings that we do have are addressing those and also the contacts that we've created. We address this as soon as we can. So there's a lot of things that go into that. I think that's a hard question to just give you one answer for, but it is something that we deal with almost daily and, and try and resolve.
Have you seen a reduction in complaints in recent months?
I, yeah, I think we have. We have, only because when this first started, I'm going back to street project calls that I got, and, and that was probably easily three to five a week. Now it's pretty rare. I'll see something on social media, or if we see something, it's getting addressed, and the next day, they're thanking us for, for addressing it or getting it done that quickly. So I, I have seen calls decrease in that regard. Do I know if they're going anywhere else? No, but i- if that's the case, then maybe they're going to the spot where they need to get the resources.
Along those same lines, I, I know you and I spoke, and ever since I, I brought up some of my concerns, what's been a few weeks, if not months ago, I know there's been a lot of work and, that has been done. Your team has continued to do a lot of work, especially with those partners that you, that you stated and showed on that one slide. I just wonder if there would be an opportunity to kind of have a presentation to council, if there would be a way to gather that group and maybe have an opportunity to come forward and talk about some of those resources? Because I think sometimes it's a lack of education, what's available as far as services, where people can go, what they should be doing, what efforts are being done, some of those things. So if you, when you have that next meeting, if you can maybe have a conversation with them of what their thoughts would be on a presentation to council, I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, we can get you even easily, probably something written, because we've kept track of all of these meetings pretty easily, or a presentation at council, we'll work with Bob to see if that's something we can do.
Because I think that would be nice, and the media can cover some of the things that are going on and what, what the public can do to help your efforts.
That in itself could be a whole presentation.
Yeah, no kidding.
Okay.
But yeah, good point.
One last comment. I have heard nothing but positive feedback about the lights. Britain Hacks.
Great.
So they seem to be a huge, a huge success.
Yes, he was, he was one of our first calls, hoping to launch it correctly.
Oh, great job.
Thank you.
You. Citizens. Seeing none.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, I know you wanna get going, so I'll make it quick. I gotta, I need Jason Gary, 3316 Fifth Avenue, Sioux City, Iowa 50106. I'm actually on a, here on a, a promise to my son that I would come forward on this issue. He recently got in an accident at an intersection we've always been, that we've lived near for, for many, many years, and you're probably familiar with it, Transit and Paxton. There's a sticky issue on that intersection, and it probably meets all the codes and all the regulations, but from a common sense perspective, if you travel at that intersection, you're gonna run into problems, you're gonna face some, some, some danger. I, I know that the engineering department will contact me, the city staff, put it on the list, but the reason I wanted to bring it forward here was because it, it, right now, it prob, the intersection probably meets all the codes for parking on the south side, but as, there's lots of multifamily along that intersection, that gets filled up, and when you're on a downhill slope, looking through a privacy fence and a line of cars, you can't see cars coming from the, going to the east. And so my kids have went in that intersection many a times, you can't see a car coming, and bam, they've almost got in an accident, and most recently, they finally did.
Jason, would you like to see some, like a no parking?
Yeah, I, I, you're not gonna have no parking, but you're, my.
Like to move it back?
Yeah, my request is them to look at whether there should be a waiver, and they should be moving that further back.
Okay.
Based upon the specific circumstances at that intersection.
Because to his point, there's just not the line of sight.
There's not that line of sight. When you've gotta go left out that intersection, you are doing it blind, and I've, I've told my kids for years, you just, if you think you've got an opening, you've gotta gun it, and you have to commit, and it's just a dangerous intersection because of that.
I will have, I will have public works or myself.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Some cities have like a two.
Spot.
Parking spot back, restriction to a lot of the corners that are busier?
It probably technically meets that, but you're on a downhill slope, and you've got a small privacy fence, and the parking, if they're all back to back on that multifamily.
I didn't know the city, if our city had it or not, but I know some of them do.
I'm like, I look at it, I'm like, it probably meets code. It's like every intersection in town.
Because it is safer to have the stop, you know, back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just a tricky one, and it probably deserves an exception to the rule, that normally wouldn't be granted, so.
Okay, cool.
Thanks.
Stro Kane.